Good afternoon, everyone. Notice hereby given the City Council of City of Alpine, Texas, a whole regular meeting at 5:30 PM. Two C two fifteen twenty twenty one at City Council members at eight oh three West Hall. And via Zoom conference in City of Alpine, Texas. The log in details will be may be found at www dot city of Alpine dot com. This notice is posted pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Act, section five five one dot oh four three Texas Government Code. Members of the audience, we provide an opportunity to address the council on any agenda item after determining. Of core proof of group of court and notice of the meeting. I'm sorry, after determination of court and proof of notice of the meeting. Zoom meetings guidelines and procedures may be found on see website. Remarks will be presented to both three minutes per person. Please speak into the microphone located. Say your name and address and address. For persons in attendance when addressing the council. Please introduce yourself by first and last name and state the award allowed award that you reside in or have business interest in. Or public comments paid by virtual tennis, please email your name and award that you reside in or have business interest in. Or public comments paid by virtual attendance, please email your name to the meeting moderator at G dot call it on at CI dot Alpine dot TX dot US. If you do not live or own property in the city, please state that in your email. If you have petition or other information pertaining to your subject, please email it to the city secretary beforehand. At city dot secretary at CI dot Alpine dot TX dot US. State law generally prohibits the council from discussing or taking any action on any issue. Not included on the agenda, but appropriate to constantly schedule the topic for future discussion or refer the matter to staff. So personal attacks on council members or say staff will be allowed. The mayor or city council members may call point to order to stop personal attacks or meeting disruptions. If an individual continues to personally attack and elect an official staff member in a meeting, they may be barred. It's come to order, in fact, please rise for the place of allegiance.
Yes, Mayor, all members are present and the notice was posted on June eleven.
Okay, now we'll take it the public comments and let me speak on any agenda item that's on. For this evening, so everybody for discussion.
First up is Karen Cantrell.
Karen? It's got to be on the agenda. And if you have something that you wish to give to the city secretary.
I'll give it to her.
Okay, thank you. Anybody?
Laura Gold is next up.
I was going to speak on the agenda item, your discussion item on the lighting.
Yes.
You want me to speak now or later?
No, now, for any time from the public to where the law states, you can talk at the very beginning of the meeting about those agenda items.
I didn't put my glasses up there. Okay, my name's Laura Gold and I live in Ward three, talking about the. Update to the Alpine outdoor lighting ordinance. Thank you for considering updating the ordinance. It will enhance the quality of living for the city and the county, residents and visitors and for commerce. Using proper shield beam and directing light only where it is intended and needed, using the right amount of light. Adopting street lighting standards with a warmer color and a limit of twenty seven hundred Kelvin will make Alpine prettier and more aesthetically pleasing. Nice city to enjoy whether you're walking in or driving through a daytime. We do not need to light the bottom of street lights, I mean the bottom of electric lines or trees across the street or. You know, treetops two blocks away, we don't need to do that. We don't need to leave lights on when they're not needed, especially big stadium lights. We don't need to blot out the night sky and backyards neighborhoods. We cannot defend like fixtures whose benefits have expired. Glare, in fact, decreases safety, so we all know what glare is. Eliminating over lighting and glare increases safety and most importantly, it is easy and costly to do. Alpine has unique economic opportunities to be mindful of as each contribute to quality of light in the area. Alpine is built on ranching university observatory, national and state parks, tourism, real estate. State and federal law enforcement agencies and dozens of services and support industries. Alpine is on a train stop, has a couple of highways running through it, has bus service and an airport, sneak town. People come to Alpine to visit, do business or travel on through. Each industry, institution and service draw hundreds of thousands of people, thousands of people from around the globe. As you know, the observatory draws several tens of thousands every year and the national state parks attract several hundreds of thousands. We benefit by protecting the night sky. It is the grandest, most visible and sustainable resource we have in most Texas. And it takes zero energy to preserve. It does require an informed community and commercial business sector. It does require willingness and motivation to do more and to do less. It does require going through, does require some imagination. People say, you know, don't tell me what I can do with my light, I prefer that lot. Or so what, we have enough rules now, but you know, if that glaring blaring light blasting into somebody's. Living room or a quarter mile away made an equivalent noise, think about that as a noise. You bet people would complain to the city council and to law enforcement.
Three minute, three minute time limit.
Well, thank you, that's really a. Even with a handicap for no glasses. Anyway, so thank you very much adopting lighting ordinance would make Alpine more beautiful.
Anybody else? Next.
My name is Chris Rucci out of Ward three. I'm your director of tourism and to just follow on what Laura was saying from a tourism perspective, I wanted to point out to you, I'm sure you're already aware. But McDonald Observatory is working on a dark sky reserve project that would, if successful, would make this tri-county area the largest. A dark sky reserve in the world. It's a really good promotional opportunity for us, it would be a good economic benefit for the city, so I do encourage you to approve the lighting.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else?
Yes, next up, we have Jim Burr.
I may have made a mistake. I really wanted to talk about the short term rule.
So you can make your public comment. Yes.
Anything that's on the agenda, you could speak on.
My name is Jim Burr, I own a house on Earl five East Avenue B. And I'm afraid I don't know the board that, yeah. I actually live in Tulane, Texas, but I've owned that house for about ten years. I'm fixing to retire and my wife and I are moving in. An extensive, very expensive renovation on it up, I spent about forty thousand dollars. And. Agenda nine, eight. The short term rental use permit for five oh three East Avenue B. That is just one house over from me, that's a long block of two hundreds to five hundreds, we're all the same. Interlaken, we have three times many Airbnbs, you said terms generically, as is in Alpine, Marathon and Marfa combined. Seen, I've lived in Tulane for thirty seven years, I'm not married. I've seen how that has really contributed to the, to the lessening of the quality of life in that part of the world. What's going to happen in this, this place, just a house away from me, it's seventy five feet. And that little neighborhood is all people there, basically my age. The road isn't very good, I like that because people can't drive very fast on it, there's almost no traffic. It's quiet and I've seen our Airbnb's go, if you want to stay there, they're going to want to go out to South Florida. Blues, there's no Uber they can call alone. So at eleven, twelve o'clock, there's going to be people maybe altered by alcohol, maybe not. Certainly going to be more traffic just because of that one house there and it sets up a little bad precedent. Once you let them in, then you're there. I've seen how that is really impacted in a very negative way down the aisle. Don't really want that to happen, you're going to lose your. If you just might get out of here. So respectfully pray that. I realize stones. I understand that.
That's time, sir.
Quick reminder, yes, sir. Anybody else?
Last up, we have Jan Woodward.
I'm Jan Woodward, I don't live in town, I live on Delton. And I guess what I'm going to say pertains to everything that's on the agenda, plus everything that's been on the last two agendas. And what I wanted to say is that. You no doubt know and understand that you have caused a lot of anger and fire, upsetness in the community. Including my own and as a retired teacher, though, I thought a lot about it. I wondered if you had bothered to take the free online courses that Toma offers to new council members. Especially the ethics course. But as I thought about it, I thought, you know, maybe they just don't know how to be representatives. Of a community, maybe they're just, I know we've got some new people here, maybe they just don't know how. So in case that's the case, I'm bringing a gift. Free copies of Robert's Rules of Order that you can all share. And then I found these two and I've read them myself. One is called Project Leadership, the ten most important things you need to know. And so I think that if you just developed more of a sense of personal vision among yourselves and a vision for our community. That things would go a lot more smoothly. The second one, which is really pretty good too. It's Leadership for Vibrant Communities and Businesses. And the title of the book is, Don't Be a Blankety Blank. So this fellow has written another book too with a title that you'll find inside this book that's quite funny. This is written with some humor. This is written with a really a kind of a bullet point idea of some. Leadership models that you may care to adopt. And I hope you'll read them and enjoy them, they're for the council. You can pick one afterwards.
Thank you very much, Jen.
Anybody else? No, that's all.
That's it, okay, let's go ahead and. We don't have any recommendations or presentations today and I don't have a report, so we'll go through the city and try to report.
Yes. The municipal court update is that I met this morning with our municipal judge, Jody Cole, who's here. We have a municipal court clerk who's sitting next to Judge Cole. And she's gone through and updated the procedures, processes for municipal court. She has conferred that the Texas Office of Court Administration, which is the statewide office that sets forth statewide standards for municipal courts. Or really for all the courts, it's all the left of District four here, but she follows the rules that they have for municipal courts. And she's come up with, I think, some good plans and processes for going forward to make sure that the municipal court here in Alpine, the city of Alpine. Is managed professionally by the judge, if there's the proper separation of powers, so to speak, between the judge, the judge. And me as the prosecutor and the police as the, but the code enforcement as well as the people that are bringing the tickets. So we're going to start having municipal court twice a month. We're going to do that on the second or Tuesday of the month. Going to come up with ways to try to. Help the citizens if it's a situation where it's a poverty issue or mental health issue that's causing code enforcement problems, try to deal with that. Try to, try to move the cases along pretty quickly. We're also going to come up with a way to try to resolve the backlog and do it in such a way that. I'm trying to get a little bit of revenue to the city, but also just get rid of old tickets. And also come up with plans that probably starts advertising this summer, late summer and maybe in the fall, sort of have a. What we call a warrant roundup to where we put out the advertisement, you know, if you come in and pay your ticket, you know, we might give you a discount, we won't arrest you. After this certain date, we're going to issue all the warrants for all the people that haven't shown up before to pay their fines. And try to do that, we try to resolve some of those issues, so. I think that. The process that she's come up with, I think, is top notch, she works closely with Judge Steele, who's sitting here, he's the justice of peace. Together, the two of them will come up with a, have come up with a good plan, I think, to make sure that there's a magistration for all persons who are arrested here in town. So that when they're arrested, they could be magistrateed. Get a lawyer appointed at Monset and go through a, a long, long process to make sure of constitutional rights are recognized after the press. So the. That's a, anybody have questions on municipal court?
I do. What kind of agreement was made between Judge Cole and Judge Steele? Is Judge Steele going to be contract or, I mean, what are we doing?
No, he's not working for the city, it's just that he is also a magistrate judge to be a magistrate. So I frankly have a probably informal way that if one of us are available, the other one can handle a magistration. So is that right?
It is, and we're moving towards video magistration, and so Judge Steele is offering us guidance and I've been ill. But he's going to walk through the process with me so that I can have succinct, clear instructions to provide to APD. And it's the way most counties are moving and most cities are moving towards video magistration. And it's good for all parties, so I'm looking forward to that.
So this is just if you're an agent magistrate or?
That is how we can be available for magistration and we need to sit down with every, and I have to tell you, and my apologies, I've been pretty ill. The last couple of weeks and it's been about a four week illness, I don't believe I'm contagious now. But our reality is that kind of thing is happening now and the technology allows us to keep business flowing, no matter how everyone's doing. And there are going to be some bumps as we move towards virtual magistration, but we can do this.
So it looks like she's come up with a process that's going to make it easier for the police to arrest somebody than just. Get on a link sort of like Zoom way and have that person magistrate it, she can check off the, the magistration with electronically on the. It's all done through this new Hill Country software that they have, so that the arrest report goes into that software. They can note that she's done the magistration, bond might be set or whatever it needs to be done. It's not, so it's, I think, once you get started, it's going to be easier and better for both the judge, but also for the police and for the person that's.
So will, will the video magistration be done just if you're ill or out of town or something, or is this?
It's going to be routine.
So there must be no in-person.
And that's what most cities are doing that. Why the judge doesn't have to be at the jail, like just takes a man to jail.
Do I understand, I was just trying to figure out if this was just.
We want to do one hundred percent towards virtual magistration. And it'll make things much easier for everyone and it's safer for all parties and there, it's going to take some transition. And we have to get used to working on computers with magistrations. Judge Steele has been doing this for a while and we've been moving towards this and it will leave a good footprint and it will really keep our documents organized.
The judge and I'll work with the police department and make sure that they're comfortable with the process and make sure they're good way out. Tell us what they'd like, not like that, it will make sure it's done before everybody gets up to speed with it.
Well, I'm not, I'm not arguing with that, I'm just trying to understand what, when it's taking place.
I was, last week I was at the district county attorney conference in San Antonio. They talked about how in most cities now that all the magistrations. Or felons in this.
And if I can, I have a very good report that will help elaborate on all of these ideas and I was going to ask if I could speak with you at the next month's meeting. But I didn't know if this was the appropriate time, but I'm looking forward to sharing plenty of information in answering any questions and getting your involvement and assistance too.
Be good since the prosecutor and the courts are really supposed to be separate, that we hear from you and not from the prosecutor and what's going on. Because that kind of gives the impression that there is still a lot of connection.
That's, that's why I need to compliment Judge Cole because she's taken some steps to make sure that there's the proper separation between the judge. And the prosecutor and the police and check with the office of court administration to make sure we're following state guidelines. And that we're going to do everything according to the way things are supposed to be done in the state, maybe not clear things have been done in the past. Respect of the body with this question.
Any questions to the council?
Just put more for Mike, I'm not sure, where do the courts fall under the organization structure?
It's, it's an interesting combo, so the municipal court judge is nominated by the mayor and appointed by council and reports to council. It's their primary job. The court clerk position falls under the both. The court judge sets the standing operating procedures and basically the expectations for the job. But the city secretary fills in basically in absences, assists when needed. The city's gone back and forth with the different types of courts. So I think it's, this is a great opportunity really to kind of clarify a little bit more the responsibilities and the involvement.
So all, all changes, all court, everything is, it falls under the judge?
For the changes for the court, it would be her responsibility, yes.
And I'm happy, I have a really helpful packet that explains all of the roles of the court and I would love to supply that to you so you can understand that. And I'm glad that you're asking that question.
Put her on the next agenda.
And we can get that packet out too sooner.
But the judge has to be sort of her own pilot, sort of not necessarily reporting to the council because she has to be. When she's appointed by the mayor, approved by the council, but her, she has to maintain a premise.
I just didn't know if she failed or something, if there was anything.
Have a question, Mr. Funn, would they then be, was there a video magistrate, would they then be accepted into the county jail?
It depends on if they're being arrested for something that requires them to go to jail, maybe the judge gives them a PR bond and not being released.
But they will be accepted by the sheriff of the county jail, alright.
The next thing I should have talked about is the rules of procedure for city council. This is sort of timely, but we also have an ordinance revision to be discussed later in the agenda. But it's, it's sort of gotten confusing or a little different on the way things have been handled. The way the council made it, so of course I only talked about is the fact that we've changed the agenda slightly. You know, had they been doing it in an awkward way, calling, calling the agenda item and say, discuss and consider this agenda item number one. And then everybody would vote on that, or at least a motion and a second. Then if you go back and say, okay, I want to discuss, consider it and take action on agenda item number one, do I hear a motion for that, do motion and second. And so we, we change it and it's, it's really the proper procedure, we just do it once. So then there's a agenda item, it can come up, somebody can make, a person who sponsored it to make the motion, if the city manager sponsored the motion. Anybody on the council could make a motion, I want to move for, that we discuss, consider, take action on the agenda item number one. That's it, that's, if there's a second, if you stop, that's the time for discussion. And so that, it's going to speed things along and make things not as awkward as y'all have to handle it. I feel they're trying to be extra careful about it, but that's really not the right way to do it, either under Robert's Rules of Order. Or under the way that cities normally handle these agenda items. The second thing is after you have the motion and you have the discussion, the discussion on the agenda item should be by members of councils. There has been, I, a lot of, you know, people in Alpine are interested in things, people that we're glad to see such a good audience here. But the audience participation really should be closer to the citizens' comments at the beginning of the agenda. And people can't jump up and start talking about a agenda item when the council's discussing. And in fact, nobody can stand up and talk about it unless they seek consent from the mayor, presiding officer of the meeting and get his permission to talk. And if he doesn't recognize it, they can't talk. And that way, if people start giving more of the comments during the citizens' comments at the beginning of the meeting. Then there's going to provide for better and more robust discussion among the members of the council and the topic discussed in the field. But the idea of people just jumping up and wanting to talk about it, I can't do it unless the mayor specifically recognizes them and allows them to do that. Somebody wants to talk and he says, no, I don't recognize you, they have to sit out, that's just Robert's Rules of Order. Then the final thing I wanted to talk about was the open meetings. And on open meetings, the. The city of El Paso got in trouble a few years back because the. Members of the city council. Somebody gave them all a bunch of laptops, they loved it. But they started texting or emailing each other during the meeting. And in fact, this sort of came up with some other cities during Zoom, you know, because not everybody's there in person. And so under open meetings laws, there can only be open discussion of the council. So nobody here on the council can, you know, receive a text, send a text, send an email, receive an email. So nobody here on the council can, you know, receive a text, send a text, send an email, receive an email during the meeting. Can't do it, it all has to be open. If they'll do it, it would have to be, the message would have to be posted up here on the T V for everyone to see. And so really the the right way to deal with it is just not to do that and not to receive or send any communications among yourselves or just, you know, somebody might want to call you and ask about something. It has to be done in public. So the other thing that we talked about quite a bit, I again, for Gio and myself, is the how y'all want to handle the meetings going forward, Zoom versus not Zoom versus other things. And there had been certain complaints that that people had been trying to get on Zoom and not everybody that wanted to get on Zoom was getting on Zoom, that some people might be getting cut off as if they might start meeting on Zoom and then they get cut off. Or they weren't allowed into Zoom and and managing the public side of a meeting on Zoom like that is is not proper. A meeting has to be open to public. And the best way to deal with that is my recommendations that we just have all of the meetings here. We have video and audio for them, we just put it on the YouTube channel, city YouTube channel. So that everything that y'all do simultaneously will get put on the YouTube channel. And everybody can see it, that makes it a public meeting and it makes it easy for people in the community to see what's going on. But it gets away from the issue of somebody at the city having to monitor the Zoom and sort of being the arbiter of who can get on, who can not get on. I know that you explained to me that some people, if they didn't get the last time or they got on a bad list or something, they wouldn't be allowed into the Zoom part of the meeting. And you can't, you can't block the members of the public from from a meeting by Zoom. But if you have, you know, if everybody's here public in person and they're talking, then everything else on YouTube is going to be public and everybody can see what's going on. I don't think there's a point, but that's that's really an item for the council to decide how y'all want to do it because y'all determine your own rules of procedure. But the the way that Zoom had been handled is really improper. So any questions on open meetings? The other thing I want to talk about is, you know, I've been at Alpine since nineteen fifty seven. I love this different from other towns, we sure get lots of gossip and cheesemakers running around. There's lots of stuff going around. Jan was talking about it, you know, the meetings violations and this. Was really no lawyer in the state that probably knows more about open meetings than I did. A lawyer that worked on the Quagmire's ground case back in two thousand and six. Fifth Circuit Court appeals twice and has spoken on it, meetings at Texas municipal meetings. And if there is an open meeting violation by members of the council and it's brought to my attention, I have a duty to present it and and do something about it. I'm not going to hide it. But the idea that people in town want to claim that there's been an open meetings violation by members of the council is false. I'm required about it, there hasn't been an open meetings violation. So I challenge anybody in the city of Alpine, before you ever mention that there's been any type of open meetings violation, bring me the proof. But if you don't have the proof, shut up. Because if there is proof, I'll make sure that it's referred to the proper authorities and something's done about it. But if you don't have the proof, you shouldn't be talking about it. You know, these these people here, they didn't get elected, get rich at the city, they got elected to try to provide leadership, but they don't need to be criticized for something that didn't happen. So the I know that the open meetings laws that say that if there's a secret meeting, it requires that they're formed, just together and makes a decision in private. There hadn't been any person left, hadn't been any, nobody's presented anything about the fact that council members make decisions and that's what you get elected to make decisions. That doesn't mean that there was somehow a secret rule. So bring me the proof or don't talk about it, that's that's basically. Not to say I I know people, a lot of people refer it, you know, privately, but I'm sort of protected with the council because that's that's my job. So anybody have any questions?
I appreciate that, I just feel that that is pretty strong words to our constituents and our members, just shut up. That's the way they need to be treated. Well, I I do, I do also agree that, like I said, I appreciate you sticking up for us, but just because you haven't been given the proof is I mean, it isn't happening and I'm not saying it is. I'm just saying, I think we need to respect our constituents and the citizens about that. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay, woman wants to say manager report.
Give me one technical moment here. I'm honorable mayor and city council. So I think just a few shout outs, this is just your city updates, taking a kind of a different look at things. And the first item I have on there is just some employee acknowledgement. For the first time, we have a group of dispatchers who have obtained their T equal intermediate dispatch certification level. This is a pretty big deal and they do have to go to training, they do have to get certified. T Fulton can be kind of mean, in my opinion, they don't make it easy. And and these are your first responders, these are the ones answering the phones, especially in emergency. So Billy Jones, Sadie Portillo and William Romero have all achieved this accomplishment. I think it's definitely noteworthy, especially for the public to know that when you call nine one one, you have dispatchers that are continuing their education and their training to to provide better quality services to you when you call. So I wanted to get that out there. And the other thing that is a big thing for us right now is we got a donation. And so the city of Alpine received a donation from the Big Ben Regional Medical Center on Friday. And it turns out that they had had a project and they had bought life jackets. And we're talking little life jackets for for your toddlers, your infants, those, you know, obviously who who aren't proficient in swimming. They had a few left over from their project, they didn't really want to dispose of them, so they donated them to our swimming pool. And I think that's an awesome thing, especially since our swimming pools open. It is going to be a crazy summer and we don't have that kiddie pole or splash pad yet. But we now know that, you know, those young ones that are coming in have that extra protection so that we prevent those issues down the road and and they get to enjoy the cool water as well. And so this is a picture with two of our lifeguard, two of our city employees and of course, two representatives from Big Ben Regional Medical Center. And we all wanted to jump in afterwards, but we came back to work instead. But it it was just real nice to have them call up and say, hey, we've got these extra life jackets, do y'all want them? So everyone's kind of hinted on the next one. And so the municipal court clerk. And we do have an applicant and we have hired her. And she's currently a part or a full time employee with us. So we hired her as a part time court clerk and a part time admin assistant. We want to keep her in her full time position, but of course, currently the budget has the court clerk is part time. And the big change is the location. And we will make this very public, we'll have signs out, we'll do a P S A. And we're going to move her to city hall full time. And one of the biggest things that I've heard over the past, well, actually several months, has always been that, well, I tried calling, I tried showing up. As a part time position, it is hard, especially when you're trying to get all the citations in and then you're answering the phones. And we felt that it would work better for the community if she was here eight to noon, one to five. So city hall is open eight to noon, one to five. And that would provide obviously eight more hour or four more hours of service. They could come and make the payments during her downtime, which we know she probably won't have very much of. She can still assist Gio with trying to get all the research and extra information that's needed. And then she has all of the staff here as well to support her. Being at the court clerk's office, you're kind of by yourself, so if something did come up, we have extra people here. And one of our other administrative assistants who is part time, Kila, will also be assisting as well so that we try and cover as much of that gap as possible. And our online payments are still an option. Currently, we use a company called Traffic Payment and we are switching to in court. This was in effect for some time now. In court is slightly different as in it allows you to actually kind of look up your name and what tickets you have and what's going on. Traffic payment, you have to know that upfront and I'm pretty sure Mr. Steele and our current court clerk are kind of back and forth with, oh, I made my payment, but it went to J P's and it should have gone to the municipal court. This would alleviate that. And the other positive side of this system is because we're already under contract and we're establishing a relationship with this company, they do offer additional online services. So if someone wanted to buy a pool pass or they wanted to rent the civic center or the pavilion or schedule a pool party. And, you know, sometimes it's hard to get down to city hall to fill it all out, we'd have that option online as well. So it'd be directly through them, the payment would get made and and you'd have your reservations. And like I said, the big thing is updating information, we'll make sure it's on our website, we'll make sure it's on the buildings. I'm pretty much sure that the public knows, hey, if you're having issues, we're in one place now, you can come by. There's someone here eight to noon, one to five, except for holidays. And the other thing, and I I just, I have to like just brag on Marcy Tuck. And when she got hired, it was kind of like a whirlwind, we're going to bring in a grant writer, we know she has experience. But I really want the council and the public to understand, since she's been hired, the city has actively gone after twenty three grants. This is one person, one person who who does the start to finish, the research, make sure everything's in place. We currently have eight active grants. This year, we are utilizing eight grants to provide additional resources, projects to cover those expenses. It's not all free money, but it's definitely a reduction in what we're budgeting. For next fiscal year, we have six already awarded. That means as of October first, moving into that fiscal or that budget year, we've got six active grants, whether it be for law enforcement, our Pueblo Nuevo for our parks, our tech spot stuff, our airport, we have all of these already in place and we still have six pending. So there there are six that we've recently applied for within the past month that have yet to have been approved. Are there in the approval process? This is, this is a good thing for the community, this is taking money from other resources and and giving us our big projects, what we need. So I really am probably going to be kind of repetitive with the grants because I really just, it it's a big thing for us to go from having, you know, the minimum number, we'd run four or five a year, but they'd be your little ones. And these are big ones, these are full construction, these are redoing our airport taxiways, runways. So so it's a good thing if you see her out on the street to, you know, give her a high five because she really is working her butt off and she is part time. She does not work full time for us, so throw that out there. The other big item, and you can, this is my service announcement, my P S A. And this summer is predicted to be one of the hottest. And and we've been getting a lot of information from T M L, which is our Texas Municipal League. And they kind of give us those, hey, be aware, keep on track of. And the C D C also has been providing guidelines. West Texas is hot in nature and we're all out here for one reason or another, we know it's hot. But we really need to keep an eye open this year. And we went from the freeze of February, the winter vortex, to possibly one of the hottest summers. And we want to just make sure, just that everyone knows, the public, our employees is, you know, watch out for each other. Please, 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 and this has already become an issue in some cities, do not leave your children on pets in in you know, an unoccupied vehicle. And several other big cities right now are dealing with this. We we don't want to do with that, I hope, you know, down the road, we we don't have that issue. And of course, make sure your pets are taken care of, you know, Jennifer's here with animal control. If you need help, she's there to help, make sure they have water, they have shade, they have housing. You know, they they also have it, you know, fur that makes them a little hotter than normal, just take that extra precaution. Of course, wear your sunscreen, we don't want you in the hospital for third degree burns. And light colored clothing. And stay cool, all those CrossFit heavy duty runners, just remember it is getting hotter, take that step back. Take a hot or a cool shower, cool bath. Of course, we don't have a mall, but we do have a library. So if you're having issues with your air conditioner, you can't get it running, you know, visit the library, take that time to to cool off. And then, of course, drink water, that's the most important thing, as much water as you can. And and then the last one that the C D C recommends is just, you know, kind of staying alert with your your weather and through the radio, the news, online. This is actually Alpine's forecast for the next few weeks, are we going to have? You'll notice that Sunday and Monday is over a hundred. So this has actually changed a couple times since I first started putting this together. They've all increased, there's been no decrease in the temperature, it's all increasing. And if you're you're keeping track of your weather and all that, you you've heard that this may be one of the hottest weeks, hottest months. And they're predicting it to get worse, so check on your neighbor. And if you see the employees out in the street and they're on the side, give them that break because our field workers are out in this heat. Most of them do wear long sleeves to protect them from getting sunburned. It's hot when you're dealing with asphalt, when you're dealing with the utilities, it's just, it's hot. I I I don't envy them. And so when you see them out there and they may be under a tree, they may be at the truck, you know, drinking water or something, just remember that they're they're outside eight hours a day. So we're just trying to encourage them, but that the public also know that, hey, we're trying to do the job, but we don't want them overheated and in the emergency room. So I kind of just wanted to focus on that because just listening to the radio and the C D C and everything coming out, the summer is, like I said, going to be predicted to be hot. We also have a nice pool, got to plug that in, so if you want to go swimming, that's a good way to cool off, just drink plenty of water. That's all I had for council today.
Okay, yeah, a comment on the employee acknowledgements. I think we need to give a certificate for the council. So they're appreciated for the work they are going through. It's just an extra effort that they've done for the job. So I think the council does need to recognize that. And we could do that for next seven months agenda.
Yes, sir.
And also on summer heat, I think you touched it, we have an elderly population in Alpine, so if folks in the public, please check on your neighbors, see how they're doing, make sure they're okay. I think that'd be a great, great help in preventing a horrible accident. So if folks could just recognize that your neighbors take care of, they look out for one another.
And it will be on the website as well, if you want to look at the little C D C cartoons.
Yeah.
Yes, those were there in Portland, I I've got a an Australian shepherd that needs a good shave right now because he's hot.
Is the weather going to be put on the city website?
Yes, so that the slide will be on there and I believe we have a little widget. No, we can figure that out.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, let's go on to the public hearing, so public hearing of opinions and view comments on the second probably in the fourth one. And on that subject, point three, same council article two, rules of procedure to the Alpine Code of Ordinances. And we, you know, the public had a chance to discuss that at the very beginning, so we'll go ahead and move on. And the next one's public hearing, so opinions and views and comments on short short term rails, which gentlemen here have already talked about it, so we're going to move to the consent agenda, minutes, facts, reports, department reports, board appointments, et cetera. In notes to the public, the following items are a routine, a routine administrative nature, council has been furnished with backgrounds or material on each item and or it has been discussed at a previous meeting. All items will be acted upon by one goal without being discussed separately unless requested by council member. In which event, item or events will immediately. In which event, item or items will immediately be withdrawn for individual considerations in its own sequence. After the items stop requiring separate discussion, that will be acted upon. The remaining items will be adopted by one of the city manager.
First item is approval of June first, 2021 minutes. The second item, this is approval of Judy Stokes for vacant animal advisory board position. And the third item is approval of Lucy Escobedo for the vacant ward five parks and recreation advisory board position.
I made a motion that was two and three.
You don't. Oh, it's all, entertain a motion for item one. Okay, I need a second. Okay, for most of the time, second. So there's a discussion on this. Unless someone's got to change on it. Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, left side, motion carries. Thank you.
I just need clarification on what we're reading on those. I know the last time that we discussed this, it was to take back to the board to have them voice their concerns, wishes. Is that going to be on every appointment or?
If I may, generally those items, whenever we receive applications, they automatically go to consent. But just because councillor Candy requested that P and Z review those members and make their recommendation, that's the reason they did that. So unless y'all want to change it, they'll automatically.
Be going to the, to the board for?
If that's what council wants to do, we can certainly do that. It's just generally before, like I said, they would automatically go to consent agenda.
Well, I knew that we should maybe do one or the other, but to choose and pick kind of makes it a little bit.
It's whatever you want.
I think, I think we need to go with it when we're regular.
Well.
You'd need a motion.
Yeah, we need a motion. What do you want to do?
I move that council make final decision as the state attorney. It's not have to go to, to the board for their consideration. That goes to.
Actually, the, the agenda is really good. They are changing the procedure. The agenda is just. Change procedure.
So we can do as is.
Right now, the, the council, well, don't ask the police to, to be voted on.
I'd recommend also taking into consideration that y'all are going to be voting on the rules and procedure ordinance tonight. So you might want to either, you know, kind of move it to next time or make a decision which I want tonight, if y'all are going to approve it.
So we can do as is on the consent agenda.
I move that we table it. Come to a reason as how, which way it's going to be handled, one way or the other.
Well, really, really quick, are you moving to table these two items? Is that true? Because if not, you're just waiting till. So these two items.
So you're tabling items two and three of the consent agenda, correct?
Correct.
I'm back.
Yes, that's what I just did. I said, I moved to table these two items. You have a question?
Okay, so we're going to wait until we get to the.
You have to vote on it.
Yeah. Is there a second on that motion? Let's see a second. So motion that's.
I have still on the table.
Still on the council, we have to vote on that. Okay, so all those in favor of approving it, raise your right hand. Oppose, okay, for, for the motion and what opposed.
Who made the motion? Sorry. To approve? Do we have a motion to approve those?
No, I just, I just went because she, she made the motion to move it in the sign. So this is okay. So they're still on the table.
Okay, and each item would be, I guess, approved by one vote then. So.
I already separated.
Yeah. Okay, so now we're going to vote on item three, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so all those in favor of item three.
A motion.
What's that? I'm going to throw in another motion to that.
Motion to approve. I make a motion, we approve Lucy Escobedo for the vacant ward five parks and recreation advisory board.
Is there a second? Okay, there's a second and discussion.
Same thing. I just think to do something. People that are putting in applications to choose and pick who's going to.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, my side, one, four to one. Let's move on to the information or discussion items. Councilperson says.
Well, I was going to thank Jan for the market rules books and all these little books. Number one, under this, I have visited with a woman who lives at Del Rio in A. It's about people speeding. She told me her neighbors were all in favor of putting stop signs. When I got ahold of them, they weren't. So I wasn't even sure how to pursue it. I just wanted y'all to know that one lady wants it and nobody else does. So if you hear anything on the streets, that's what that's about. I apologize to Mr. Rujia for number two, not getting ahold of him. Because I didn't, I haven't read all my books that Jan brought me. So I just, I just, I know we are now ready to make some money in Alpine, Texas. So I'm going to read you really quick. It's not going to take forever like Rod did. Best of Del Sol, June 20th, six to 10th. On the fourth, at 11 o'clock, you can go eat at the American Legion's and you can go to the Kiwanis Parade. Or you can go to the Cowboys games, which is the third and the fourth is a double header. Or you can go to Marathon to the chili cookoff. Or you can go down south and they have a parade and something else. So if you can't find something to do on July 4th to put money back in Alpine, you might as well give it up. Viva Big Ben, Wednesday, the 28th, the August 1st, over 60 shows. These are Alpine Marathon from Lincoln Fort Davis and Martha. You know, we're going to house about probably. And I could be wrong on this, Chris, but I say 75% of these people are going to be right here in Alpine, eating, going to Sonic, spending money. Bring it. We need their money. Labor Day weekend, Big Ben Gun and Knife Show at the Diego Center. Art Walk, November 19th to 20th, 27th Annual. Also on the fourth, Tlinga Parade and some kind of motorcycle big thing. The Kiwanis, last year, their fireworks was their 50th year, but they didn't celebrate it because of the COVID. It's this year. So I would suggest you call all your friends, neighbors, cousins, aunts, put them in these motels and look for some money back into Alpine. That's just my suggestion. Doesn't mean anything.
It's your assistant or your, is the assistant.
I don't know. I, I didn't do it the right way. I apologize. I did not get all these people in here. I knew when I started, if I got one, if four couldn't come, then we have a problem. So I'll just hear their voice and just tell y'all all that that's happened.
Sure.
You're welcome. Dr. Roger is here. He came in late. He, he wants to make some donations to the parks. But I don't think you can speak now because we changed, the rules got clarified to us. Is that right? So I'm just going to discuss, he's working with Marcy on, on getting some changes and doing donations in our parks. And it'll, it'll be good in the end. He wants to get some trees. He wants to donate some, some, some actual trees, right? And in his brother's name, in various people's names. It's a good thing in Alpine, you know, to get a tree.
Yes, and Marcy's working on actual paperwork so that it can be presented to council.
Yes, and they're going to decide which parks they want it in, where they want it, et cetera. It'll be good.
We can put that on the agenda for July and speak in the public comments.
Sure.
It is an item on the agenda for July.
Okay, good deal. Thank you.
Rod touched on the Zoom meetings. I, I was approached last week and week before last that people were being denied, that were being kicked off. I agree with Rod, that's not an open meet. I, I don't, I don't, I don't know the fix on that. I just know that's not right. You know, y'all come down here and you can hear us. They say people can't hear us on these microphones. If they're, if they're allowed to get on, they cannot hear us. If they're allowed to get on and not denied in the very beginning, then they're cut off. I mean, that is not an open meeting. So I don't know what the fix is on that. They're saying YouTube, Facebook. I've heard now that there's a Zoom for government. Can't talk now. Remember, it's only me.
You can't talk, sir.
All about me right this second. Just give me a second. I'm here for it. But there is a better way. And I know there's got to be a better way to do these meetings for everybody. Where you can be at home, you can be on your phone, you can be on vacation, you can be anywhere and hear us. That's what needs to happen.
And I think I'm done. No, just to talk.
Yeah.
Oh, I agree with her, but being on that Zoom meeting, what, two meetings ago? I could hardly hear what was going on here. So we need to do something other than just, just making it available, making it available. It's not our only issue because we, we, I couldn't hear hardly anything.
It will be an action item for the next meeting, kind of what direction they want to go.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Just want to, extra items to be accommodated by a brief second effects included where plans are coming from. Action items are limited, agenda for me. Discuss how that works. Before we get to citizens, that was fine. And we'll just move on to the action items to be discussed. They should have been covered to very again, item section three. The first one will be city manager.
So the first item is to discuss, consider and approve the WTG gas contract, including the relocation of the city gates. I did reach out to Mr. King and one of his coworkers, Mr. Bean, and Randy Guzman was also in that meeting to get a little better understanding. It is a 10-year contract that they're requesting. We are limited. They are the only one who provide a service. It's just a guarantee that for the next 10 years, unless someone wins multi billions and comes in here and redoes all the gas, they're going to provide it to us. And it, it's just for them knowing that for the next 10 years that the city will be buying the gas from their company. The attachment that indicated the, it was exhibit A was a sample one. It's not the actual one that determines our locked in gas rate. That varies. So every time, say we only go with a year contract or we go with a three-year contract, that changes based on that one sample form that they provided at the back of the contract. I included it as one document. I probably should have separated it out for clarification. I know everyone kept looking at it because it says you're locked in for 10 years at that rate. That, that's not the case. It was just a sample form. And the big thing to mention is for us, we're going to get about 1.3 miles in additional distribution line. And Randy can explain further when it gets opened, if you guys need it. So this is, is great for Alpine because it also creates some new service access. So if the city decided to expand, we already have the availability for gas in that, those areas. So I do have Mr. King and Mr. Bean here. If, if you need to talk with them as well, they are on Zoom for additional questions. They can explain it a little bit better. But I know some of the confusion last time was the lock-in of the rate for 10 years. That's not the case. That is an action item too, by the way, for the actual rate. The length of the contract, it being 10 years, that's their standard contract. It's just saying that for 10 years, we're going to purchase gas from them for our citizens. And the big thing, of course, with the movement of the gates, it's a safety thing. We do get about 1.3 miles of additional asset for the gas department. It will open up or create new service areas. Our ability to expand so that we're, you know, increasing our, our services. It does help the gas department on their footage. They are required to take care of so many footage from Steel to Polly. So that helps with their reports to the Road Road Commission, keeping up the maintenance side of it. There's no downtime for the city if the, if WTG has issues because it would all be handled outside. The distribution line on our side wouldn't be affected. So we're not bringing in gas. The inspection of it from the Road Road Commission and the higher levels slightly changes, which is a benefit to both parties. I kind of wanted to give you a little bit more background before you guys opened it up for discussion and all that. So I'm leaving you here, Sam.
Okay.
Question. So that's why there's the difference. The contract is for 10 and the resolutions for three. So what will we be doing?
I wanted to probably invite y'all the background first.
So entertain a motion.
I make a motion where this is discussed, consider and approve the WTG gas contract, including the relocation of city gates. Sorry. So does that mean we'll be having to do the resolution every three years?
Three years of it. So if the city of Alpine goes with three years, then it would be every three years, one year, two year. That, that's a decision on that next action item. But when I first presented it, I had included all together. And the initial resolution that was provided in the contract and resolution, attachment A, was confusing because it says for 10 years. And that's not the case. It, it's just their sample form for us to kind of use. Our resolution guarantees the rate for one year, two year, three year. And of course, every time that comes up, we just go back out for new rates.
There's a rule in Texas Constitution that we're not supposed to obligate the city for more than a year at a time on debt. Normally, the way you get around this is you have contracts like this that go over every year. Say we, we do it for 10 years, but we have to, at the end of every year, if we don't, the same with cancer, it automatically goes over. But it's not a proper report that the city had a contract that says we obligate the city for 10 years.
While I'm looking at here, it's up for 36 months, it's 435.
That's, and that's the second action item. This is just saying that we're going to utilize the WTG.
As to, is we're going to use your contact who we're boxed in anyway.
Wouldn't affect, one, because that's not obligated.
What is the use of a resolution if you have a contract?
Contract is saying, we're going to buy gas, West Texas gas, the only provider in West Texas. Item two is what rate we're willing to pay for that gas. And we have three choices. We could pay one year, two year, three. If we go with three years, we're locked in for that rate for three years. There are two completely different.
But I presented them as one last time and I shouldn't have.
But one, we just locked in with West Texas gas.
We're just saying we're going to use their service. That's it.
There's no one else who can buy gas. That's what the item one.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, just go on, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Left side, motion carries, see now this week. Now we'll go to item two, which is the rates.
So discuss, consider and approve resolution 2021-06-06 regarding WTG gas rates. And I did provide you before the meeting, Mr. King provided us with the rates as of today, which would be effective July 1st. So for June, we are definitely a spot rate. Compared to last meeting, the 36 month actually went from 428 to 435. So that is an increase of seven cents. Just a little background, our current is 1212, but that's your, your base, basic pay. And just a little background, our current is 1212, but that's your, your base, basic pay. And moving to the 435, it would be 1307. It is a slight increase. My only comment recommendation was for council to consider the effect of going spot rate every month. When we go spot rate, you're almost guaranteed to go at the higher rate no matter what. I, I mean, that's the reality of it. We can't predict that the gas is going to change at this point. We thought maybe it would go down. I don't think, I mean, everything is just going up, whether it's gas, whether it's building supplies. It, it's just the reality of it. This one, and this is where Rod had brought in the whole, we can't in debt the city. You're, this is what we're going to pay for what we use. So for every M C F.
Yes.
I always get the after names wrong. It would be the 435 plus the city additional.
So I'm in the motion.
I make a motion that we discuss, consider and approve resolution 2021-06-06 regarding W T G gas rates.
Okay, so a second.
Well, we need to get a rate in there.
What?
She just gave us the rate, so.
Do you want to go with the three-year rate?
Well, that's what we're going to discuss right now. So I need a second. Okay, most right second now at the discussion on the way.
Mayor, I've got a copy of the Texas gas service rates throughout West Texas. This rates, why don't you tell them what it says?
Yeah, right now, the, the rates, now these aren't lock-in rates, it's changing, but right now they're at 389. So the, the prices that, that we're getting from West Texas gas are for lock-in rates. That's the difference.
So that's 389 and I just stole Texas gas corporation, so it's pretty close.
Yeah. Okay. Yes, sir. Have any discussion? Anybody? Who with 36 months, sir?
Thank you for the clarification. It wasn't a little confusing. That's where it lost me on the 10 years, and that's why I thought, you know, I have to say.
And I, when I went back and had this, I would ask that, and just so that we stay in line with what we're doing, is you amend the original motion, Chris, to include the three years at 435. It was assumed, but let's just get it in writing.
I think that we discussed, consider and approve resolution 2021-06-06 regarding W T G gas rate, which will be 435 for three years.
Is there a second on it? Okay, second, continue the discussion. Okay, let's vote on the amended motions. Most in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, my side, motion carries. So now we got to go back to the original motion. And it's in favor of the original motion as read. There's no rate on that one. So we need to vote on it, and it's already been. Yeah, this would have moved this one. You have to, it amended it. So now we got to go back to the original and vote on that. So all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand.
It's the same motion.
And so all those opposed, my side. Did you all understand that?
We're trying to get rid of this one.
Yeah, yeah, we're trying to get rid of it. Yes.
We want it now.
Yeah, you're trying to get rid of that. Okay, so, okay. All those in favor of it, raise your right hand. Oppose, raise your right hand. There we go. Okay, so motion carries, it's opposed, and we're locked in for three years at 435.
And thank you, J J King and Mr. Bean for.
And Randy.
Randy for, for saying, yeah, kind of.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm happy to be here.
Okay, now, Chris.
I think that we discuss, consider and approve the second and final reading of ordinance 2021-05-06 and ordinance in chapter 13. City Council ordered to close the procedure to the.
Second. Okay, boot that emotion, we got a second. Now discussion.
Thanks. When this first started, and I don't know if you was going to remember this, but this kind of goes along the lines of what Rod was saying as far as text messaging, emails, and all the stuff over here. There was a, not even a paragraph, a sentence that said cell phones were not allowed. Is that something that we want to, and then I know, I apologize, this is already the second reading, but that was brought up, that that, that could get us in trouble. Is that something we want to look at and put it back? Do you remember when I was in there? Maybe that's something that we need to consider about actually putting back in, is that we do not have cell phones in here. Just to make sure that there's no.
So previously how it read, cell phones wouldn't be allowed, really.
And I mean, I don't have, I mean, the audience, you know, they have it, right? I'm just mainly, just for our protection up here, just kind of what you're saying. And so I doesn't even have, I'm not even saying we even have to include the audience. I'd be fine with just cancel.
Spin the audience, everybody.
So you want it?
Okay. So answer any more discussion?
Um, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
So I would just remind you all that if, if you all approve this, it's going to solidify the Zoom language on the first page of the agenda. So if you're thinking to make any changes, like the, like Rod's YouTube suggestion, you might want to either table it or make a motion to amend it as written because it is solidifying, like I said, that Zoom language on the first page.
Well, what they, for, for, I would, I would make a mention that we table it, seeing as there's, since Zoom is included, and there's a lot of things, like I said, that Zoom is not, is not, I'm not saying it's not working for us, but there, there definitely needs to be some changes because it's, it's hard for, for the audience to understand. I was finally on the other end.
Technical issues.
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess it's technical. I don't know if, I mean, I'm not, like, you know, I don't know what the issue is. Maybe we just need to find some other thing.
He's like.
I'm sorry, but it's just a discussion for the, for the council.
I'm wondering, could you, could you recognize a question for me for a second? And asking favor. One of the, one of the items that she brought up was the use of cell phones. And I understand and I appreciate affecting the council, but the implication that I heard is that it would be prohibited for the entire group.
That's why we're tabling it so we can discuss it further. Okay, that includes you all. Okay, now really should be recognizing anybody in the audience, because I'll make the comment at the very beginning. Okay.
I, I will make just one comment if you don't mind. Because I know Aaron Rodriguez, the Tom A-Rod, is, is alluding to is he does have a solution to our technical issues that, that could benefit, would have to, of course, purchase some additional and equipment, maybe some wiring and additional time to see if it even worked.
Yeah, so that's why, that's why I think we should table it.
My, my potential fix is to have a good link where everybody can hear it and see it on YouTube, but that's only a one-way. People are talking back to it, but if people want to make comments, they'll all come here, be here first and I go on. So, and that's one, that's one way. So you all decide you're all interested.
Okay, but you made the motion to table it. Okay, and there was a second, right? Could you second? So any more discussion on?
To, to have a.
Yeah, we already have it on there. Yeah, we have it on there.
So all those in favor of table in the motion, please raise your right hand. Oppose, my side. Now let's get back to the.
I believe you still have the original.
That's what I was just going to say, to go back to the.
Sorry, I'm just excited.
Okay. We'll have to repeat again, or you all know what the.
It was to discuss, consider and approve the second and final reading of the ordinance.
And there was a motion made and seconded, so it's all on it. If you think, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Opposed, go to, be right hand again. Okay, it's, okay, thank you very much. Let's move to item number four.
Item number four is to discuss, consider and approve first reading of ordinance 2021-05-01, an ordinance amending chapter 18, building and building regulations, article seven, outdoor lighting, the Alpine code ordinances, which is the dark sky. Y'all that are on high level, that's, that's dark sky.
Is there a second? Okay, motion's made, second. Any discussion?
Yes. I have some questions. And before I ask, I want to tell you that I'm just all for this, but I just have some questions, so I'll kind of understand what's going on. Has this been reviewed with the school district, the hospital district, the county, Sol Ross, and that? It's going to affect a lot of them, like the, like the stadiums. So has it been discussed with them, you know, as far as the cost of what's going to, are, are, and are we as a city even prepared for that? Because we will.
I can answer, I can answer part of that. So I know that the county's aware. I know that Sol Ross has been made aware. And so Lisa and Bill, they've done presentations everywhere. And as far as the implementation, yes, the city is not in compliance. We've never denied it. It, it would be a cost. Several years ago, when this first came up, it was brought to the city's attention that there are funding sources and grants that would provide the funding to, to make those switches with the lighting, not just to us, but to anyone who applies. It may not be a great source of revenue, but it's something. And the implementation process, from what I understand, is five years. So from start to finish, the city would have five years to start going through and, and improving the different lighting sources that don't meet those recommendations, as long with, as long with all the other entities.
Bill ran into the fact of grants out.
Yes, there are grants that will provide you either the little covers or they'll provide you with the fixture itself. And you basically just apply what you need, the areas, what the effect is, provide the documentation, a resolution or an ordinance.
And who enforces this? Who does that fall on?
Because this is a, an ordinance, the code enforcement would be required to enforce it, and new construction would fall under the building inspections, and they'd have to be in compliance with it.
And we've always supported the dark skies, so that's something that's not an old issue. We've always complied with it because it also brings in a lot of truth.
I'm all for it too. I just.
Yeah.
If there's a plan put in place, it will, every year you could get grant funding and then slowly start to make your. You don't have to do a lot of.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Propose.
The next item is to discuss, consider and approve the proposed city of Alpine organizational chart. So in one of my presentations, I made a comment that some of the things during the budget process is to update not only the policies that are in place that, you know, deal with the budget and the finances, but also the organizational chart. And we did provide you with the current organizational chart, approved by council in 2018. And the big change, and I want to give you some background information, our utilities director did step down. He did resign. That department is one of your biggest departments. When I think of utilities, I think of water, sewer, and sanitation. It's the hardest position to fill because of the certifications, the level of knowledge. It, it's a lot of information. Under the old chart, not only was that individual responsible for your three biggest and hardest to maintain departments, but they were also responsible for gas and airport. Randy Guzman knows how to run his department. There's never been an issue with how he runs it. He, he knows the railroad commission. Time after time, you will get audit reports that they pass, 99%, 100%. He, he needs to be able to do his job. And the airport, under the city charter, the city manager actually is the manager of the airport and can delegate some of those responsibilities to someone else. Abel was moved into a supervisory position with the airport. There's no reason why he can't handle and, and keep track of and maintain that department. It, it's currently two employees. Your utilities, it is very, very important to understand that when you go out to hire, when we go out to hire this individual, you want to make sure you get someone who is going to focus on your waters, your sewer, and your sanitation. He, or, um, anything now. Your water and your sanitation are two biggest concerns because we do get reprimanded quite a bit. The state does come down with T C Q and crack down on us. You guys just approved a $10,000 fine. We're going to continue to get fines. I, I think it would be in the best interest of the city to break the departments apart so that you can have that one department managed by one individual and give their sole attention. The other big difference is the old city organizational chart had multiple departments. The city's never filled these departments. The city's never brought in communication specialists, never brought in economic development advisors. I, I feel that we need them, yes, but there's no reason to continue having all these extra departments when, I mean, ideally, there, there's not the positions to fill. So we've kind of moved some of those, like the city secretary would take under the media, the website, which is your record. It, it's your public service, your announcements. It's, it's all of that. And then non-departmental, we moved fire department under there instead of having its own separate line. The city is in an agreement with the fire department. The city doesn't actually run the fire department. We, we provide financial assistance, and at some point, we may provide some personnel staffing. But they are, they really are a volunteer fire department. So they're really non-departmental. So kind of wanted to, to break it down a little bit, kind of the thought process on that direction.
So enter the motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve the proposed city.
Is there a second? Okay, motion, next second, especially. That adds a lot of clarity to it now. There was some confusion and stuff. It also put your licenses and stuff. We, the folks down at the wastewater people plant are working towards that. So it kind of isolates where they're in charge of that. Same thing with the water department.
You, you have a good crew right now.
Yeah, you have a good crew. And one man, it's hard to handle, heavy that's everything. I think that's going to be one time. That, you know, what happens if something happens to him, you know, really, he didn't have anybody, but he's got the folks under him that have got the certifications. So now he's a columnist, just like the other departments. So it's good, thanks to clarify the organization chart.
I agree, it's a double two. I think we need to look at, Randy will be going out to department, it's going to be a lot of different administrative. We need to consider whether, he, he's got a very small department.
Which leads into our budget. There was a catch to this. There was a catch to this.
Just to put out there that his department does bring in the most money for the city of Alpine. And his department is the one that is broken into when, when we need it.
His department brings in the most money without attachments. So water brings in quite a bit. Well, it's water, sewer, sanitation. They have debt tied to their, their department.
So I'm just wondering whether that's something that you might need to book in to Randy, whether you're going, you're going to need somebody else because you're going to have a lot of administrative duties now.
That, that jumps right into our budget, and, and you need to know where you're at with your department so that you can make sure you have the position.
Point of content, really. And also, the guests are probably provide a lot of funds for our students. Anyway, any more discussion? See, none of those favorite, raise your right hand. Oppose, my side, motion carries. Okay, item number six, city manager.
Uh, the next item is to discuss, consider and approve the local agreement for the coconut park lodge, Poets Grove, a project between the city of Alpine and Sol Ross State University. So the inter-local agreement has already been signed off by Sol Ross. It's been a project that Adalina's been working on for, for quite some time. She's been back and forth, different city managers, different directors, different everything, but she stuck with it. The idea, and she had the presentation that I really would like for her to kind of go over with you guys if you're willing. It, it's to take that one section of coconut park with approval from Sol Ross that basically allows us to come in and redo it and provide the landscaping and the water ponds and bring back that natural and, or natural nature and the birds. Just make it kind of one of those spots that you go to. If you've ever been in that era, there used to be water ponds. It, it's bringing all that back. So city of Alpine would be the primary on this. We would go through all of our grant funding. It may be part of the operational budget if needed. Sol Ross is just allowing us, basically, here's this plot of land, use it for what you need to use it. We'll mow it once a year. But they've agreed to it and they're willing to move forward with the city. It is a thirty-year contract, just saying, hey, we're going to work together. At any time, it can be dissolved. An agreement, I shouldn't say contract. It's a thirty-year agreement. And Adalina is here. She's done all of the hard work on it. I just am here to make sure it goes before council.
Okay, before you do that, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay.
Okay, you stand there.
Okay, I made a motion that we discussed considering a previous to local agreement with coconut watch, poets group, a project between the city of Alpine and Sol Ross State University.
Is there a second? Okay, we'll just wait a second discussion now.
And by the way, this is Adalina Bill. She's our environmental service coordinator. She handles all of our Keep Alpine Beautiful. She deals with TDS recycling. Not all of you may know her, so I'll throw that in first. Okay, now.
This is just a short presentation on the projects and I'm starting in the next slide the background. So these projects kind of started like twenty years on and off and leaving, started, stopped, started, stopped, modified. We're still working with some of the initial partners that started these projects. There's a list of a couple and there's, there's a lot more, just private citizens and professors, different people with different backgrounds, different experiences and expertise. The city back in 2019 amended the parks master plan and approved this ten-year vision. So this corner of coconut would close the loop of the whole master project plan. The inter-local agreement was really agreed back in February fifth. And like Megan said, it's a thirty-year agreement or guarantee access to the line based on the grounds we're applying for. And it would be a three-phase application. So every three years we could apply for these different segments of these projects. Also, two projects were submitted to the state water plan. Only one was accepted for water conservation statistics, strategies. So that also being part of the plan also allows us to submit for grant applications to the Texas Department of Homeland Defense. Just a background on what we're planning on doing is the first one is rain gardens. Those we pretty much have completed. There's a side up ahead, but they're pretty much completed by, by the parking lot, by the baseball fields and the pool and then north of Hendrix. What they're going to do is take all the extra rainwater and funnel it through them and they're going to be self-sufficient. So it's less maintenance, less watering. The next, the next step we're working on is the treated plant from wastewater treatment plant. We're planning to reuse some of that into those coconut lodge ponds. Those are the ponds east of the coconut lodge. We're going to do a pilot project and we're just going to test it out for ninety to one hundred and eighty days. And depending on how they react to the influx of water, we'll decide if they need to be modified or mined or anything that needs to be changed. What we're working at this time in another section is grassland restoration. We're grugging whiskey at this time, planning on seeding June or July. And this is going to be all native grasses, native flowers to kind of bring brown misty birds back to that area. And then the next point is trail extension. Pre-preservation, that would be removal of invasive species and start planting native species, more congoeds, more species native to this area. Finally, the last part of the project would be blind installation. Essentially, the whole area will become just like a nature walk and it will be different attractions for different. I guess for different liking of different. I guess for different people, they like birding, nature walking, exercise and everything. The next slide is our timeline and it's just a tentative, it's been changed by every, we're moving forward, but it'll be changing a little bit, but if you have any questions on the timeline, please let me know, but technically it's all set till December twenty twenty third.
Got a question.
Yes, sir.
About using the water that's treated from the waste. Okay, and you're going to do that on a trial basis to see how it's affected. Because there's two springs out there. One by the lodge and the others by the night hole that were covered up years ago. So it dried up those ponds.
Also, some of the hydrologists working with us, they say that also the pumping has lowered the water table so low, but we not seen the.
It's a good, it's a good word.
This is just. And this is just the project area that map. So you can see these blue segments are the rain gardens. The green polygon is the grassland restoration. The orange polygon would be the creek restoration. The ponds are east of the lodge and I think the next slide will show the ponds. In this area is a set of four ponds that they flow down to the creek. And it's not good just to have water. So that's why we're thinking they're little still cold water and it'll be like a wetland restoration area and help bring more birds back. The next slide is work. The GIS class with Dr. Ben Ziegelsa Ross has done. They done elevation models and there, we're trying to see how the water will flow as, as the other ponds are at this time. So like I said, the pilot project, the next slide is to test the ponds and identify the flow rate, test them out for ninety to one hundred and eighty days. And then see their response. And depending on the results, we would modify the area and if it's the restoration concept and do continuous monitoring and maybe potential aquifer storage and recover. And. In the grassland restoration, this is where we are right now, but I think we're going to be pushing it into July.
Question on the ponds, are they going to be lined so that they retain the water?
I think they are lined. We think they have a layer of end to make, but that's why we're going to test them. We'll see how they react the first days and if the water just seeps in, then we're going to stop and replant everything.
Next, we've got a very poor soil out here. Water just sucks it into the soil.
Adalina has been working really hard with the Sol Ross, especially the geology department.
And also the NRM and although, well, multiple departments and a lot of people are involved.
That's a, that's a great asset to the city because there's, I'll talk to some bird watchers every once in a while and those folks spend a lot of.
And the birds are there, but if we make the area better, we'll be one direction for migratory.
You can attract the more and greater migratory, also birds that migrate from the south. So it's a great project. Thank you. Any more discussion on? Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. Propose like sign, motion carries.
So the next item is to discuss, consider and approve this submitted bid proposed by U Construction on the remodel of the visitor center. I did include a little cover sheet on this one. I will do better about that in the future. The RFP went out shortly after the city council approved the preliminary amount based on all the work that Eddie Molinar and Heather Yaden and all the staff had done. Chris Ruzia also assisted with part of that. We went out for bid. We received two bids. One didn't follow any of the procedures, so they're automatically rejected. The other one did come from you construction and I kind of wanted to go into a little bit. This would have been a great project last year from a financial perspective because, well, people were struggling, getting jobs, getting, it would have been great for you construction. The price of material had decreased. This year, everything has gone up. I am recommending that we do have the money. The procedures have all been followed. The money is there. It's a great project. The visitor center, it's your focal point. When you come into the city, it is centrally located. It just, it just needs that wow factor and this would help with that. Unfortunately, you constructions bid is higher than what council originally agreed upon from a budget perspective. It would be utilizing the fund balance, which some people would consider your reserve, your extra. It's just your operating expenses and revenue over time. So there is that little extra bit. I recommend council go out for the full project and not just, because I did do it in two bids, the first part for the restrooms, the storage, and then the second part was the pavilion. I recommend that we try to get that contract in place and get them locked in because we don't know if October first, we try to go out for the pavilion, the prices aren't triple. We could follow the market as much as possible, but that's a day-to-day thing. They've done great work for us. They've worked at the animal shelter. They have, they're currently working on the remodel of the sunshine house, the old Alpine school. They're willing to negotiate. They're willing to work with the city. I just think it's a great opportunity. It's a project that should have been done a long time ago. It will add to the asset value itself. So you're not only improving your assets, but you're maintaining your buildings. And it's something nice for people in the public and tourists to come in to stop by, say hi and have that cup of coffee, go to the midweek mercantile. I think it's a good choice for the city.
Enter the motion.
That we discussed, considered, approved, and it been proposed by you construction on the model of visitor center.
Is there a second? Yeah, that building's been way, way. As far as. I think there's still that one restroom there.
Yes, they have one working restroom. The other one is now become a closet. They don't have air conditioner currently. We are making a slight window unit modification because it is going to be a hot summer. Part of this contract does include the HVAC to make those improvements as well. It's a nice, small, little space, but the columns out, it just hasn't been maintained. It needs that facelift and have your focal point. So when tourists come in, it's like, ooh, this is nice. We got the coffee.
And it's a point of contact when you enter the city.
Worked really hard to get that to be a center point for the city of Alpine. And there's a lot of people that go to a lot, they have a lot of activities, they go out of the way to decorate. It looks really nice and it's brought in a lot of people to that area.
Yes, and they take pride. And this is, like I said, it's a good investment for the city. It does increase the value of the asset. That's the financial side of me.
And just to double check, it doesn't put the city in any kind of.
It won't put the city in any type of buying with the tourism funds. It will be a budget amendment. I will come back before council with the amendment that's saying that we're going to utilize the fund balance to cover this, which is allowable.
And that money could be, and I'm just trying to say there's, that money could not be used for anything else anyway, right?
So the, yes, so we clarify, hot funds can only be used for items under state law that affect tourism. The visitor center is specifically for tourism. It's part of one of the reports that we do submit to the state. So we're using the funds specifically for tourists.
I just didn't want anybody to think that we're going to use money that could be used on the streets or that.
Oh, no.
You know, that we know that needs it, but there are restrictions. So just to know that we're not trying to just do a building and make it look nice.
Just know that this is very specific.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Close, blank sign, motion carries.
Heather, thank you.
Let's go to item number eight.
Just discuss, consider and approve special use permit applications for short-term rental special use permit for five oh three East Avenue B. Owner of record is Jason and Robin Stone. Short-term rental special use permit for two oh eight Berkeley Street. Owner of record is Adam and Chatel Brandt. Short-term rental use, special use permit for one fifteen and one seventeen North Sixth Street. Owner of record is Desert Dame Thirty.
Motion that we discuss, consider and choose special use permit applications for short-term rental special use permit for five oh three East Avenue B. Owner of record is Jason and Robin Stone. For short-term rentals, special use permit for two oh eight Berkeley Street. Owner of record is Adam and Chatel Brandt. And short-term rental special use permit for one fifteen and one seventeen North Sixth Street. Owner of record is Desert Dame Thirty.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, we'll just wait a second. This question.
There?
Yes, sir.
This item came up. I started doing some research on the status of law on short-term rental laws in Texas. And there's been a lot of controversy about this and a lot of pushful in different cities. Years ago, Austin had a very strict ordinance that places, okay, but in short-term rentals in Austin. And the third sort of appeals in Austin, the case told to Terry said Austin can't do that. Block short-term rentals because property owners have a right to have their property, have a right to associate with people that are the people that have their property. And the top son with Texas Missive League and Texas Missive League highly advises against any outright bans or any kind of arduous approval process for short-term rentals. I mean, I know just these over here just didn't like having the short-term rental next to his house. But basically what it boils down to is really cities can regulate short-term rentals on the basis of code violations, but not on just their short-term rental. Really can't block a short-term rental just outright. If somebody has a code problem, you don't have to have the sewer right, the trash or things like that. Then you could regulate, but, but just to say, well, this is a residential neighborhood, not want to have a short-term rental. That is not what Texas Missive League recommends. So I'm sort of saying this to the public too, because Martha went through all of this and that, that sort of, they tried to get real strict and then they basically got advised by lawyers to back off and be not quite strict as they were trying. So just making those comments in general to.
So in essence, it's taken out of, it's been taken out of the hands of the cities as far as denying the right.
That's correct. It's dying of property rights.
And that's what the previous council told us, but I think we'd agree that we were still going to put it in so that we were aware of.
Oh, yeah, and it's, it's okay to regulate it. It's okay to have advocate a permit. It's okay to have a fee for the permit. And it's okay to make sure that they register with the tax authorities, which they pay the hot taxes and so on. All of that's fine. It's just outright bans, which is in trouble.
That we could use code enforcement and things of that nature.
Yes.
Speed that clarification. Any word discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Propose like sign. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, let's go on to city council. And I'll start on my right with council stuffs.
The short-term rental thing. You know, we can see both sides. When I was campaigning, there's a, there's a couple of ward going every house around them is a short term. They bark out their back door. They don't know who they're going to see over the fence. There's no answer to it. It's that go buy that land. If it's going to, if something comes up for sale, buy it real quick. And then you can control what's around you. I could, I didn't know what to tell them. I mean, what do I say? Oh, sorry. So that's just my thoughts. So that's just my thoughts.
Just wanted to, once again, our thank you to Big Ben Regional Medical Center for the lab jackets. And congratulations to the dispatchers with the order, Manon Jones. And special thank you to Dr. Robert Chu from Trees.
Yeah. Okay. Well, yeah. So.
I appreciate it. And, and just, Mr. Brandt, I think, just so y'all know that we are going to continue working. Now, we, we've always got before. Uh, these things have been kind of, kind of hectic for us, but we haven't lost sight of that. We do need to work with you all as far as short-term rentals, noise pollution and that type of thing. There's a little bit of time and we'll get back on that issue to try to find something where we can all live with.
Goodness. Sir. Councilman.
On your issue on the heat, are city employees provided long sleeve shirts?
Yes, so they, they actually have the option. Some of them have long sleeve and shorts. And some of them even have undershirts. And they're all provided water receptacles, whether it be a jug, ice chest.
Sunscreen?
Oh, they needed to get it. The lifeguards have quite a bit of it right now.
Okay.
And then, of course, they, they have their 15-minute breaks and they are encouraged.
Johnson. Uh, I, I just express my appreciation to Megan and the G O for keeping the wheels turning here in the city. InterPOSAL.
Thank you. Yeah, and I want to thank y'all because y'all have done a fantastic job or a couple things. Nothing's changed, so we'll move forward and we'll continue to move forward. Want to thank the audience here for being here this evening. And I know it was kind of a change as far as the, when people can make comments. And I've been pretty relaxed and given some leeway to folks where they could speak at the beginning and also if you're on certain items. But that has changed. And so anytime someone has a comment that they want, or any item that they want to talk on, it's going to have to be at the very beginning of the meeting when I announce it. And it'll be the three limit rule. Okay? So that one, thank y'all and stay out of that heat. Thank y'all very much. Entertainment.
For a turn.
I'll just go get a second.
I was gonna say, you can't go home yet.
I forgot about that. Yeah. Right now, let's go.
I need an emotional, uh, session or get a, or a session of...
Hold on.
Discussing the, the compensation for the, for the...
Sure. Give you a second. Okay. I need, all right, all those in favor, get out of the room, session one. Raise your right hands.
What did you say about...
You know, 7:23, 7:23.
Yes.
We'll take it because you were...
Um, let me email it too because I'd have to add up this...
I would make a motion on pending litigation on the Crestwell suit to take no action.
Is there a second discussion? Okay, all those favorite raise your right hand and unanimous, so no action on item number one. Let's go to item number two.
I would make a motion that we appoint Justice of Washington as our Interim Director.
There's a second on that and I think we discussed it pretty much. So all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, unanimous, let's go to item number three. Anything a motion?
Make motion to raise G O P to 1925 of taking step forward.
But there's a.
Run, I don't have.
Well, I can make the motion. I make the motion that we increase the pay on the city secretary tonight, $1,925 of pay. And the interim utilities director to $2,500 of pay.
Okay, discussion. Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous, change motion to adjourn. Okay, thank you very much.